1041 Ridge Road Self-Storage Facility located at 1041 Ridge Road, applicant Ridge Road Golf LLC is requesting a use variance to allow the construction of a self-storage facility in a 5.93 acre parcel having SPL number 079.150-1-8.006, located in an MC Medium-Intensity Commercial District under Section 225-17 of the Code of the Town, Webster.
Okay, we did hear this a couple of weeks ago. You tabled it, and we asked you for additional information. Just give us a quick note version of the project, and we'll ask you some questions pertaining to what we asked you for.
Of course. My name is Matt Newcomb. Myself and Xeno were here two weeks ago. The client is Brian McKinnon with Krista. He's representing Krista. He doesn't necessarily work with Krista. Also with us is James Keenan, representative from CBRE, who put together this marketing material and has marketed the property in the past. So, we have been before the planning board for sketch plan approval prior to coming to the zoning board. At the planning board, we reviewed the project with them, and we received a positive recommendation or positive feedback from them, which a letter was submitted to this board after the review. And one of the things they really liked about the project was the reduction in traffic that it provides for this general area. So, real quick, just to get your bearings, the project is proposed to be south of Ridge Road, and the entrance is adjacent to Brewster's. Brewster's is this location right here. It's more or less a flag lot. The townhouses that were originally proposed as the Golf Tea Project were further south of our project. So, that's the general location. ESL is right here, and BJ's Plaza is across the street, kind of. So, that's the general location. So, we did appear before this board two weeks ago and presented the project, and there was some requests for additional information from CBRE about their process and how they marketed the project. So, we did submit a document that did outline their general process and their thinking and how long they marketed and what they marketed it for. Again, also here tonight with us is James Keenan with CBRE, who can speak to any questions you might have.
I think one of the questions that was asked was the how long it had been marketed? What it had been advertised?
Sure.
And I think the market value, if I remember correctly.
James will step in and talk a little bit about that.
So, hi, James Keenan, CBRE. Nice to see everyone. We marketed it from roughly middle of 2014 to middle-ish 2018, so almost four years. As far as where we advertise and where we market, online-wise in commercial real estate, the two websites that get the most eyeballs, in our opinion, are LoopNet.com and CoStar.com. And we use both. There's a few other websites that we use as well, but they don't get nearly the traction that those two do. Being that we're CBRE, we're the largest commercial real estate firm in the world, we market on our website as well. So, I would say, online-wise, LoopNet.com, CoStar.com, and CBRE.com for online marketing. That's not the only avenue we take with marketing. We also do hard mailers still. We do email blasts to our contact lists, and we do good old-fashioned, you know, knocking on doors canvassing type marketing as well.
And you didn't receive any interest for what the property was used permitted for the property?
Unfortunately, not. We had conversations that may have led to some lukewarm dialogue, but we never got to a point where we received bona fide offers on the rear portion of the site while we were marketing.
How did you change the pricing of the property as this progressed over four years?
You know, the problem with changing pricing with a property like this is that a lot of times with commercial real estate, we'll get feedback from buyers. Like, we'll get interest, we'll maybe have some offers come across, and when we don't make deals, at least we have a gauge as to where the market is on a particular piece of property, and we're able to lower pricing accordingly to try to get to a sale. The problem with this property is that we never really got there with any particular parties. So, we did adjust pricing a couple of different times during our marketing, but we were kind of, you know, shooting dark, if you will, because we really didn't have offers to come in to give us a gauge as to, okay, maybe we come down 15%, 20%. We never really had that. So, we did try to adjust pricing a couple of different times, but we didn't really have any hard evidence as to how we should be doing that.
Done? Correct? Any questions?
No, there's quite a bit more material than we had previously. I know we had had a couple of applications before this board looking for interpretations of types of uses, and we speculated that some of the potential parcels were this parcel based on the questions they were asking, and you have them listed on your targeted prospect list.
Yes. One of the things we do in our initial marketing phase is we try to identify certain categories that maybe are missing in a particular submarket. And we tried to really target those particular users. So, on that list, you'll see some of those categories that we felt were lacking in the submarket, hence makes sense to target those tenants or buyers. We did, just to know.
I don't think we asked this question, but on the concept drawing that we saw, you had access from the apartment project and from Ridge Road. Is that something? Are you going to have through traffic on that development?
So, the intent is more or less to give access to any of the residents off of Raven Side Lane if they want to utilize the property. So, the intent is to allow access to any residents on this side. So, it's not intended for through traffic. There will be gates for access only, which I mean, we'll get into a little bit more when we get further along in the planning process for it. But the intent is to provide access on both ends for ease of access, rather.
Locking access or driving?
Well, driving. Yeah.
Key cards?
Yeah, I mean, key cards or keypad with numbers. I mean, again, we haven't really gotten there yet. We're a little bit early in the planning process to get down, get there. But there'll be some sort of, it'll be a secured facility.
I know this was, this project, I'm sorry, this project was advertised last meeting, so we didn't want to have a problem with that. You have a question, Don?
Are you proposing any area variances?
We are not. Nope. We're not asking for any additional variances beyond what we have. We're able to comply with all the zoning.
Okay.
I hate to put in for the record.
I know. I know. Very recently, we actually are done.
Yes.
Overall, I don't think we had a problem with the project, the concept of the project. I think we had to do our due diligence and ask you the right questions and get the answers that you provided for us. And you did a very good job of that, by the way. I've been probably the least, as far as Webster resident on this board, and I've been here for 15 years in that. I remember that being a dry range, I remember being empty forever. I knew eventually something would happen to it. I actually thought, because the apartment project expanded there two or three years ago, I actually thought eventually they would come forward and that would be developed as apartments. So, something had to be done with it. Any other questions?
Yeah. Is our attorney satisfied with the additional information? Because I believe this, many reasons, this just tabled from last time that you've heard us.
Well, it's certainly better than that singular letter that we had. It provides some reflection of the effort where it was listed for sale. If there wasn't any offices, then there's not a lot of backup documentation to show for any negotiations. I did have one question. I know one of the board members asked you about pricing. How was it priced? Was it priced by acreage, by?
At the time of our marketing, it was one large piece with the land out by Ridge Road in conjunction with this rear land, right? So, one of the ways we tried to go about pricing was that we know what, call it, one-acre pad site developments for either a Taco Bell or a KFC or McDonald's should be priced for. So, we arrived at pricing for that acreage that was out by, right on Ridge Road, at a certain value that we know that those trade for. And we did, we used that pricing combined with the acreage in the back, which we were really just pricing as pretty much just what we see commercial land transfer for in the Monroe County area. And we were doing that on a per-acre basis. So, it was a combination of value in the land out front, which was obviously more valuable, and the land in the rear. So, it was sort of a blended per-acre value that we were coming up with.
I think there was a reflection in the submission that you made of the comparables that you used. I think there was Brown Crowe Boulevard, there was a few others. Or maybe those are just nearby listings.
Question?
Yeah, I'm just. Well, it's page two of three. I don't know if you have the attachment in front of you. Maybe about four pages from the back page. They may be irrelevant. I don't know. Sure.
You know what this is? So, this is LoopNet.com's LoopNet listing. And you know, if you use like Zillow or Trulia, it automatically generates, the website's automatically generating.
So, they're not true comparables?
It might be, but this isn't, that's not something that I, you know, we specifically put forth. This is a web-generated nearby listing that it's putting in front, yeah, there.
So, as part of the presentation, does it reflect the pricing that was advertised through either your own internal site or the two sites that you mentioned?
Was the pricing on those sites while we were marketing? Yes.
Right, was. Is that information in the materials that you provided?
I would assume it's in that marketing package. You know, in the marketing package that we gave, we have sale price just listed as negotiable, so we didn't have a list price in our marketing materials. That's not that uncommon for the listings that we do.
Right, so, I mean, can you indicate for our record what that list price was? You don't have the listing anymore, correct?
No, I don't. And I don't, to be honest with you, off the top of my head, I don't remember exactly what we were listing at. It was two years ago last time we were actually listing it. So, I don't know off the top of my head what our last number was out there.
But your testimony is that whatever it was at in 14, it never moved from 14 to 18 because you never got an initial offer?
No, we did change pricing from 14 to 18, but it never was predicated on an offer that came in.
I appreciate the fact that you've described for us what the methodology is.
Yes.
And you might say to yourself, well, really, the price doesn't really make a difference as long as it's persuasive that you tried to put it up for market value and you never really got a measurable amount of suitors for the property.
Sure.
I know you mentioned you changed the price. I was going to say that.
Well, however, I guess without comparables, right, we really, as a board, are taking your word that it was competitively priced against comparables.
Sure.
And then it was appropriately marked down as you failed to get any level of interest.
Sure.
But we really don't know what those numbers are.
There's a page.
Those can be provided.
It's titled 1041 Ridge Road Commercial Listings, and it's got a couple of listings that look like, it's difficult to tell what they are, but there's a couple that have no list price. It's not applicable. And then OfficeSpace.com is the 7.27 acre parcel listed at 1.6 million.
Yeah.
And then Bullet Number Six is Properties Zoom Prospector lists vacant land as 2 million.
Yeah, so, we did a little internal beyond what James has even seen to kind of look online to see if we could find any pricing. And it was pretty easy to find some older listings, and this was kind of a list of what we came up with as to what we were able to find online for the parcel. So, this is separate from what CBRE did or advertised.
So, these were actual listed prices that the property was advertised for at some point in time?
Correct. And the backup data, I believe, is included in here, you know, from LoopNet, OfficeSpace. So, those are included in the behind portion of the packet.
Okay.
That was what we were able to come up with internally beyond what CBRE put together.
The board can make its determination, of course, whether it's sufficient or not. I just, it seems to me that when CBRE won the right to list and broker the property, that they must have done some simultaneous market analysis that showed comparable pieces, the pricing, and what you all decided to price it out at. And I don't think that's part of this packet.
I don't think it is either, but we do do that, yes.
Okay.
And we did do that for that reason.
And I'm not, I don't have a dog in the fight. I'm just trying to make sure that the right amount of information is getting out to the board. And maybe there is an argument that that's confidential or privileged. I haven't heard that, but I guess I was just curious. I think that would be the most telling, depending on what the statute requires, than a pact of information that kind of, I'm not saying it beats around the bush, but it doesn't necessarily easily zero in on what the criteria is.
Sure.
Sure. I'm going to represent the developer. As we noted a couple of weeks ago, the developer of Webster Green Apartments and that ownership group is the same developer that owns this land, although the apartments have been sold, as I mentioned to the board. I just want to make sure that James having the listing for four years and the developer taking it back in-house is not a reflection on the broker. It's a reflection on the market and that the developer has internal leasing people for office buildings and apartments, and it's a very large organization. So, after four years, we just decided to bring it in-house. We're paying people salaries and benefits. We figured, you know, we're not getting any activity. We'll put our sign up, which is there now.
I don't think any bit of the board, I just can't see if Barry did anything negligent or unworkmanlike. I'm just trying to mine some data that would be the most telling.
But the typical thing would be to have a broker listed. And you can see even on the ridge, you know, Cushman and Wakefield's out there, Hannah's out there. I've seen a number of signs on Ridge Road. It's not uncommon for developers to use brokers. In our case, two years ago, we just decided, because we've got overhead, that we're paying every day to lease property and manage our assets, we just decided to take it in-house. And we've had zero luck in the last two years to generate any interest at all.
Two years ago was 2018. We heed our counsel. I mean, he keeps us in check to make sure that we're asking the right questions and doing the right thing. Use variances are a little bit different because we have to do a little bit more due diligence to make sure that we get all the information that we need to actually, to grant it. And I listened to the comments that he made. I can't say I disagree with anything that he says so far. 2018 is two years ago. 2014 is when you said you actually listed the property. So, you said you changed the listing price, but you never said whether you went up or down.
I'll confirm, we went down.
All right. So, just for record, you did.
That's on the record.
Okay. And did you ever consider or have a customer or a potential client interested in subdividing that lot? Because it's six acres, you could have split it in half and had two, three-acre parcels. And I know, the flag lots are different. I understand it because of the way the access is to the property.
So, just to, I apologize for not touching on this initially. So, the parcel initially was seven plus or minus acres, which includes this portion up here on Ridge Road. So, part of our process over the last few months was subdividing out this portion along Ridge Road so that this is a sustainable parcel back here. And it's, I mean, I can't speak for these guys, but I would assume it has to do with the value of the properties. And this is a more desirable location for someone to come in where this being back off the road, there's not a lot of advertisement for that area, there's not a lot of passerby seeing it. So, that's why we went that route. So, that was, we did consider and did do a subdivision, very similar to kind of what you're speaking of. It just, it makes more sense to take out the parcel that's on Ridge Road because that's more viable for a particular use that's allowed.
Yeah, and I can tell you that the 1.2 acres that's been subdivided, that's been filed, right? Right now, we are looking for about $350,000 to $400,000 for that frontage. That's what Krista is using internally based on the market that we've seen along Ridge Road and transactions that have transacted, but it's completely separate from this piece that we were talking about tonight. It's kind of like, they just don't go together, and we had no luck with the two. So, we're hoping it generates some interest here in that 1.25 acres or so.
Yes.
But that is our completely different markets.
Okay. So, if you've marketed that property yourselves for two years now, do you have any ideas of what your starting price was when you took it back in-house and where it's at, you know, before you subdivided?
Well, we were always handcuffed because anybody who had any interest in this, and there was a bunch, it was part of a larger parcel. So, getting someone to have interest in seven acres was virtually impossible. And 1.25 acres is a viable site. You can see along the ridge, there's been a lot of nice developments that you guys have looked through the town, and a lot of them are in that one and one and a half acre range. So, this strategically, the passerby mentioned us about the feasibility of subdividing that frontage, made a lot of sense to us because maybe we can get some interest in it. But the reality is, these two, they're just, they're like, they just don't go together.
Oh, I can agree with that. I'm just asking, what was the, what's the value of the property with the seven acres? I mean, I'm trying to get some numbers that we can hang our hat on as, you know, everybody's been mentioning. And I ask is, okay, you've been trying to market this, you had a starting point, you had an ending point where nobody was interested in it. What were the prices? Show me that you're not, that the land is not of a value that anybody would want to pay that makes this project giving a use variance about the only option left. Give us some.
All I can say in the two years that we've had it back, we have not had a single offer on the seven acres. That's all I can tell you because that's all I honestly know. If someone said, I'm just going to do hypotheticals, as you could, James would probably attest to this, someone might say, I'll pay 450, 400 for that frontage, but I'll pay 600 for all of it, hypothetically. So, this is just massively discounted because they really don't want this. They would want that. So, that's why the passerby came to us and said, what if we were to look at this as two separate parcels? Would we be interested as a developer? And could it generate some interest? And that's why we left the recommendation to do the subdivision, knowing that this has never been that desirable and that the storage facility appears to be a good use based on the market and all the information that Passer provided to the board.
The other thing I'll note, from a use standpoint, these parcels are basically any use, virtually almost any use that the title Webster has, is allowed on these parcels. So, there's not any restriction other than the self-storage. So, there never has any restriction as to what could go here either, other than the self-storage.
Yeah, the problem is, is that we have to meet the standards. And so, the question that I'm hearing is, do we have enough here that we can say that we've done our homework and done our due diligence and that the standards have been met? I mean, okay, applicant will be deprived of all economic use or benefit. Yeah, that's pretty much proven. Hardship relating to the property is not unique, does not apply to a substantial portion of the neighborhood. Okay, no. Does not alter the character of the neighborhood, probably less intensive, problems not self-created. Well, sectioning off some of those other parcels the way you did didn't help. Their most variances are self-created. Request is not for the minimum. Okay. Difficulty cannot be obviated by another feasible method. Probably not. Character of the neighborhood will be preserved. I'll say, it's close. I'd just like to see the hard financial data.
Do you have any of that?
Well, I'm just saying, you started out listing this at some amount of money, and four years later, you had worked that down to something less, and there was just no interest, even before COVID hit. I mean, you know, it was, the economics were doing pretty well. There's no interest in the property. What are those points? I mean, you know.
The New York State title law, let me read this to you. In order to prove an unnecessary hardship, the applicant must demonstrate to the ZBA that for each and every permitted use under the zoning regulations for the particular district where the property is located, one, the applicant cannot realize a reasonable return provided that
One, the applicant cannot realize a reasonable return, provided that lack of return is substantial, as demonstrated by competent financial evidence. That the alleged hardship relating to the property in question is unique, it does not apply to a substantial portion of the district or neighborhood, that the requested use variance, if granted, will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood and that the hardship hasn't been self-created. So at least with respect to the first criteria, the question is whether you've provided competent financial evidence. There's certainly some financial evidence. Question is whether, whether it's enough. And I, look, my sense is from listening to what you've all collectively said, that you've had a very difficult time moving this property. I don't think any board member would dispute that. But the language in the statute is designed so other folks similarly situated can't default to apply for a use variance simply because they're having a hard time or they can't get the return that they're looking for. So we want to make sure that before we grant that, that you're at that, that higher level, if you will, that really mandates us to approve it.
I mean, we've had, what was it, the taxes that have been paid in the last 10 years, the carrying, the cost of money, marketing, I mean, we've had a very significant amount of money invested.
No, no, I realize that, but if, if the owner of the property, let's say, again, a hypothetical, feels that the property is, you know, for whatever exterior reason is, you know, they want $600,000 or $700,000 for the property, but there probably is a market to sell it for $300,000. That's what we would need to know. Because we, we don't have any signpost here, we have nothing to compare the efforts against in the materials.
And to take that one step further, if you said, well, yeah, we could sell it for $300,000, but look, we've already sunk, you know, 450 into it, so we'd have to take a loss if we can't go through with this use. Now, that's something you can hang your hat on.
But we're upside down.
Right, but, and I'm not saying you did, but if you made a bad deal in acquisition of the property, that, that's not part necessarily of the determination to grant the bare notice.
Totally understand that.
But, but, but maybe you made a fair deal and, and the property's depreciated substantially because of the restrictions that you've pointed out. And we just need to see that you're willing to go there.
Well, the entire site was developed into the 90 apartments at Webster Green. So that, we started to back and worked our way forward. I was part of that myself, so, I mean, the land's been sitting there for maybe 10 years.
Well, I guess what, I'm not speaking for the board, I guess I'm just curious as to what, what's the hesitation in providing us those numbers?
I don't, I don't, I'm not sure I understand the question, John. We're not, I'm not hesitating to provide you with anything. We have not had a single offer on the property and we, we don't even have a listing price because no one's even called on the sign once.
No, I think there, I think there was...
I'm just saying, in our two years, I'm talking about the last two years. I don't want to speak for James. Since we took it in-house, we've had zero offers, we've had to sign there for 18 months. And I don't know what to tell you on it. I don't know what to tell you because we don't even have an, we don't have an offer, we don't have an asking price, so zero interest, none, not, nothing. If, I mean, being facetious, if someone wanted to offer us $300,000 for that back piece, we'd take that right now. Just to cut the bleeding because we, it's been very substantial financial hardship. And the idea of having this frontage to generate some interest actually was a pretty good idea. And we're hoping we can deliver something to the town there that's conducive with what's happening on Ridge. But we've had tremendous financial hardship the last 10, 11 years.
So what you just said, we're not opposed to, I mean, I'm speaking for the board. I mean, we're not opposed to the project. And the things that we're asking you for is, is an effort to, for us to be able to grant what you're asking for. So if you are upside down on the property, if you can provide documentation that shows that you, that you are, it would help us. I didn't see it here.
Yes, they did, they did provide that.
That was the initial.
They did provide that.
Hi.
What?
Sorry, I'm Zena Lago Negro, I'm from Passerall Associates. At the last meeting two weeks ago, I ran through the letter of intent that was supplied to you and I did provide the numbers. And it totals to just a little bit under $700,000 over the period from 2010 to 2019.
Use Passerall.
And...
$691,000.
Correct. And I think one of the things that we have to remember too is the uniqueness of this property that really makes it a little bit of a white elephant. It doesn't have any road frontage, it's not highly visible. Most of the uses that are permitted within the MC District rely on visibility from the street frontage. You know, any retail, sales or service, which is the majority of what's allowed here, would want to be right on the street and be able to get their customers in and out in a very quick fashion. The, the strip of land that leads to the developable area is 270 feet long. And once developments occur along Ridge Road, it will make this property pretty much invisible, which is okay for self-storage. I don't think you want that along Ridge Road anyway. So it's, it's sort of a hybrid here. It's whether or not the applicant can gain a reasonable rate of return versus what some of the uniquenesses are about the property and then throw in neighborhood character, which we're not impacting. In fact, the letter of intent also goes into a reasoned elaboration about compliances with certain sections of the comprehensive plan of the Town of Webster, which talked about noise and light and pollution and all those types of things. And traffic was one of the largest concerns in the comprehensive plan. What, all four of those are, are things that this project doesn't have any conflict with. It doesn't provide a lot of light, light or noise or traffic impacts. And those are all the things that sort of balance a use variance recommendation or request.
Yeah, I, I, I think what the board is saying, I believe you're in pretty good stead. All of the criteria that is reflected in your, your six-page, was that Matt's letter or your letter?
Our letter.
Our letter. Okay. I think you're in pretty good shape. I think the only question is, under criteria one, where you, where you indicate, while there has been some interest in the property over the years, the property owner has not been able to secure a viable buyer. I'm assuming the word viable in part lends itself to a, an offer and purchase price that would be agreeable.
That's correct.
And, you know, you've gone through the steps of using hard numbers in the balance of the paragraph where you've set forth the real property taxes, the mortgage interest, the principal, so on and so forth. But for some reason are reluctant to give us the numbers that Richard Ellis had for four years.
The listing price numbers?
Yep.
We, there are two listings in the additional packet that we supplied to you. One that shows a listing of 1.6 million and the other a listing of 2 million.
Okay, so let's, let's just stop there so that we're clear on that. The 1.6 million, that was a, a listing price by the broker. Yes?
So in your packet, there's a page...
Is this today's packet or...
In today's packet, yeah, the additional one that we submitted. This was not supplied by CBRE, this was supplied by myself. This was just me pretending to be John Q. Public, going to the internet to try to find out what properties are for sale in Webster where I can build my really cool retail establishment. And this is what I found, these are the available listings. So there's a total of six. There are three LoopNet listings, one from land and farm, one from office space, which gave an approximate list price of 1.6 million. And then the last one, number six, is properties.zoomprospector.com that listed it for $2 million. So I don't know where these numbers came from. It was just to show a representation that this, it's out there. The other listings didn't have any price tag on it, so if you're still looking for property, you could very easily still contact CBRE because they were shown in most of all of these listings as the, as the broker agent and inquire about it. So James is advising on the record that these listings are out there and even though they're out there, they're still not getting any phone calls or inquiries or, geez, can I make a low-ball offer on it? There's just nothing coming in. So I don't know how we can provide that type of data, hard data, when it doesn't exist.
Well, my, my original comments were based upon the 2013 through, when was it listed? 2012, the 2014 to 2018. Was the, the comparables that were done over that timeframe? That's all.
He was just questioning the comparables between your listing.
Because there was probably a written market analysis that would answer all these questions.
What I would say is when we list development property like we do this on our online platforms, what we're going to have out to the marketplace, we usually are price undisclosed or price negotiable. And we do that purposely and we do that on a lot of listings for a couple of different reasons. Unlike selling a home or buying a home, there's a lot of other aspects besides a purchase price that go into a piece of property. So especially for a development piece, we could have an offer that comes in that is all cash, closed in 15 days. We can have an offer that comes in that is contingent upon financing, wants to have a due diligence period to do all kinds of different studies, have it and, and want to tie the property up for 240 days. So on a lot of these commercial development pieces, we purposely are out to the market undisclosed because on those two separate scenarios I just outlined, we would probably adjust our pricing accordingly. So it doesn't make sense for us to have a sticker out there, a certain number, when we're not sure what the other terms of the deal would be. Now, you're also asking me to recollect information, this was from 2014 to 2018. We did have different list price during that time. They might not have been public information, it would have been on LoopNet.com or CoStar.com, but we did have on our side of the table different list price that we were adjusting.
No, I, it makes perfect sense to me. I wasn't, I'm not asking you to do anything other than the fact we tabled this for two weeks and which is, it strikes me as being a real simple resolution. If you had that marketing information from that time and just submitted it, I mean, it may answer all the questions.
Sure.
But listen, what my recommendation would be to the board, if, if they're not satisfied and they may be satisfied right now, is we'll open it up to the public, the board can discuss. And if, if everything else is in order, so to speak, there's no reason why you could not submit that to the board in writing, so you're not holding it up tonight. And then the board could vote on it at its next meeting.
Okay, if I could just say one other thing. During our marketing of the property, we were talking initially about a 9.57 acre site, which included the Brewster's Ice Cream and the, a separate land site that is here that we've sold to another investor. So I could do as you suggested, John, and go back to a list price during that time, but they may not be...
They're also different property.
We're talking about a much different development property that we started marketing in 2014 and then sort of changed as we went, but to, by the time we were done marketing the property in 2018, we had a much different offering out there, which is a much different offering that Krista has been marketing for the last two years. So even if I was able to gather that information, I'm not sure that it would be...
It's a double-edged knife, as they say, right? Because then, I guess if we discount that completely, then we're just left with the in-house efforts, if you will, over the last couple of years, of which we don't really have any hard data for. We have just, you know, a effort that has been unsuccessful.
Sure.
If I could just add one final thing, our last meeting, Don had mentioned how that road spur that the planning board had asked for to be over to Shoe Craft. So when the Webster Green apartments got developed, anticipating this nine acres was now going to be available. The planning board insisted, because of the density that could be built there, office, retail, there's a whole bunch of things that could have gone there, that to alleviate some of the traffic, that there would, we would negotiate with Dick Fox from Wendy's, now deceased, but nonetheless, Mr. Fox, because he owned all the land that was between us and Shoe Craft. Remember that, Don? So when the apartments got built in anticipation of this nine or so acres, the planning board and ourselves looked into the future, basically said, there could be a lot of square footage built here. The planning board said, that's fine, but we want to see this road spur to alleviate some of the traffic. So I'm just giving you some history because what we anticipated could happen basically 10 years ago. And what did happen today is that James sold that one little piece up front to the, is it Dr. I think, or the investor?
Yeah.
Mr. Gian Greco and then Brewster. So that whole plan of 10, 11 years ago in big density, office, retail, whatever, none of it came to fruition. The only thing that did was, Mr. Gian Greco here and, and Brewster, that's it. And now we're before the board with, the planning board with a much, much softer use, much less density and more than likely, not speaking for anybody at the planning board, but you know, maybe that road is a moot point now because the intensity of the potential development is a fraction of what it could have been 10, 11 years ago when we were planning the whole site.
All right, we're going to open this up for public comment. If you'd like to speak on behalf or against this project, call in at 872-7011. So while we're waiting for that, any of the board members have any questions they would like to ask?
Not questions, but I, I do recall the project from 10 years ago and it is significantly different than what was before this board quite some time ago. You've certainly provided that there's been a significant effort to market it with, with no interest in, you know, whether it's based on price or location or, or just the market, but...
It sounds to me like the, the advertisement back in 2014 has changed significantly because the lot has been divided up and so I don't think we could do a comparison. I think we're comparing apples and oranges. So I don't think that's going to help the cause in any way, shape or form. Going to close the public portion, doesn't look like anybody's calling in. I'm going to have to make a seeker motion. I'd like to make a seeker motion pursuant to NYCRR Section 17 of the Environmental Code. I will make a motion for a type two seeker.
Oh, you can. Unlisted.
Unlisted?
It's a unlisted.
It's a use variance.
It's unlisted.
John, what to make?
Well, it's an unlisted action.
It's an unlisted action.
Okay. I thought that's what you gave me.
Just amend your motion to, rather than type two, is a unlisted motion.
So in order to type two, it's an unlisted motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Doesn't have that listed on the directions or...
All right. Does anybody need to table this or make a recommendation of the table for more additional information or can we proceed? I mean, I guess that's the proper way to go. Sounds to me like the additional information that they will provide would be for a parcel that is non-existent today.
It doesn't exist anymore.
It'd be a larger project, it's been subdivided out. They could provide that information, but it's not going to give us what we're looking at, which would be a price that...
which would be a price indicative of the six, roughly six acres that you're talking about right now.
Yeah, I mean, the parcel has changed significantly over the past 10 years, as has the projected uses. There was going to be some shopping, some doctor's offices, professional buildings, and that has not come to fruition. You know, we've certainly all seen the sign listing it as we go up and down Ridge Road. I don't know what additional information the applicant could give us other than continuing to list the property and not being able to sell it and adding to the expenses that it just, it's an odd parcel that doesn't really suit any of the things that would normally happen in a medium commercial, medium intensity.
Don, do you need more information?
What am I missing?
Is this complex still going to comply with the initial plan? Where you're going to limit number of curb cuts utilized at the center entrance?
Don, yeah, the intent is to, once we construct the roadway here in the center, it would be that Brewster's will be required to connect as well as this parcel once it's developed.
So what mechanism are you going to use to have Brewster's connect?
It's, I believe it's in the resolution for the memorandum of understanding that the planning board has, I think they have it on record, correct?
I don't think Brewster's signed up on that. They were a partner in that memorandum of understanding. I know the easements are there, but what mechanism are you going to use to do the physical changes of eliminating their curb cut to Ridge Road to utilize the entrance from the back? And also the parcel to the east Brewster's?
Yeah, that's all part of what we have to do as part of the project.
That's going to occur with this project?
Yes.
Okay. You don't mind that be a condition?
Are you okay with that?
May I make a recommendation? So the memorandum of understanding, the easements that are on the property already are there for the benefit of both of the properties on the east and the west side of the excess drive. So your question is, how are we going to physically make them do the work that's required?
How will it be accomplished?
Correct, correct.
That's correct.
Understood. So it's been many years since the negotiations or talks that happened at all with Brewster's. We're hoping that they will still come to the table and we can figure this out in our continued efforts to get the property developed. You asked about a condition to the approval, which we don't object to. I would just like the condition to at least be flexible enough that for some unknown reason, that we can't comply, but we still have a reasonable solution, that we're able to follow that through with the direction of the planning board through site plan review.
Well, how do you work that?
Yeah, exactly.
That would be something that is addressed when they do go as more of a planning board. If the issue before this will work, is the used variance.
Correct.
They're using some of the arguments that they, you know, with master plan and curb cuts and whatnot in their application, now make sure that is complied with.
Right, the planning board is well aware of those commitments that were made and they have a copy of the memorandum of understanding as do the applicants.
I understand. I think we could support that.
We could still make it a condition of the used variance and so it's a matter of record, though, correct?
To me, it's more of a planning board condition. I don't see it being tied to the used variance.
Still matter, it'd still be a matter of record that we put that out. Now, whether it's enforceable is something else.
Do we make it as a recommendation as opposed to a condition?
Recommendation.
Because it really is a planning board. The ingresses and egresses are all the planning board's concern.
Yeah, this board could write a letter to the planning board.
But we could write a recommendation.
Yes, I think that would be a more appropriate course of action.
Recommendation. Okay.
Just out of curiosity, the sale of that piece, that lot, makes it a different-
We didn't put the recommendation in there.
Piece of property to sell today.
The one to the west.
What was the, what was the sale price of that lot?
This lot here, this lot here, and this lot here were all part of the bigger patient initially. This one has been subdivided out. This one is Brewster's now. And this one is the Dr., well, Jane Greco Homes at the Dennis office.
But that's the only piece that was sold after 2010, right?
No, Brewster's was sold.
Brewster's was also sold.
What were the prices for those?
It's all public record off the top of my head. I mean, I can look it up really quickly, I can't, I don't recall.
But those prices would be subtracted from the 691, or am I seeing that wrong?
Well, all things being equal, but their road frontage versus the flag lot, so commercially, they don't have the same value. It's not going to involve whether or not the- The chart that they provided, that the applicant provided, has costs running at $691,000, right? It says from 2010 to 2019, is that right? And should those sale pieces come off of that?
In other words, you're not as far upside down as 691, which the documentation shows, if you sold off the other two lots.
I understand the question, I'm just, I'm not sure when these other parcels were subdivided out. So these, this was from-
Because you were making the argument that we're dealing with apples and oranges now, and I just wanted to find-
I think the point is, is from 2010 to 2019, they paid a total of $691,000 in taxes and mortgage interest and all these factors.
And the Brewster's and the Jane Greco piece was sold before 2010?
I don't know when was that sold? They were sold that day?
Which these numbers don't encompass. The 691 is without those two parcels.
No, that 691 is the whole thing, part of something.
So wouldn't we really need to subtract those two sale pieces from the 691?
Like I was saying, these parcels were subdivided towards the end of the market. So I mean, you probably did your 10% of it.
Okay.
Should be included, so it's minus 69,000, 15%.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know if they were 200, 300, or $50,000 lots. I don't know the answer to that. I'm only stating it in the context that you as the applicant's brought up. They're really, this is a completely different piece than it was then. But your presentation includes, I think, in its entirety, but then it doesn't include money that you did give back on it.
Well, it includes the taxes that have been paid since 2010 to 2019, regardless of the subdivision or not. So as Xena said, you know, as of late, it's been subdivided, but they're still paying taxes on it, which is included in here. So it's from the date that they-
I'm with you. The numbers aren't reflecting the income from the sale, is what he's saying. So 691 is indicative of everything you've paid out.
Correct.
But you actually, you've got money coming back from the sale of two lots. So the sale of two lots should be subtracted from the 691, which should be-
Well, I would take the sale of the two lots as subtracted from what they purchased it for, whenever they purchased it.
Correct.
Right, I mean, because that has to be, I mean, we could factor it in.
Even if you did it on a percentage, you sold off, you know, 30% of what you, what this number reflects, the sale price is still going to be, when you sell, let's say, a million, and then you sold another one for a million. So there's $2 million of income, but you say you're 691,000 in the rears. Am I wrong?
Unbalanced, what you're saying, based on the information you have?
I'm just saying that-
I understand your point.
That's why I think that our counsel's going with this and I want to confirm that we're looking at the right way.
Okay. However, doing that, you know, pair of pursue, dollar for dollar, wouldn't be appropriate. All the store water management facilities that were installed were to accommodate the entire development.
True.
The road work, the road network and infrastructure. So when you do it that way-
I'm not disputing any of that.
No, no, and I'm not debating it, sir.
But there should be a line item that's income.
Okay, but what I would then do is I would go back to the original purchase price. I would look at allocating all the land cost to the O2 apartments. And I would add the other half a million dollars or so that we have in infrastructure that this benefits that hasn't been built. That's not in this number. So this number is a carry cost for taxes and mortgage interest and whatnot. On top of that is all of this infrastructure that got installed for the entire development and it never got built. So I would argue, I don't mean argue, that's not the right word, but I would respectfully offer that that's probably low, the 691.
So is this, so the 691 then is the carry cost of the 7.2 acre parcel. Brewster's is already there, Dr. Jane Greco already owns his piece. It assumes the piece on Ridge Road is still connected to it, but all of the land development has been done for the apartments, for, all of that cost happened. How am I trying to say this? Originally was a much bigger development and in pieces have been developed and there's been costs incurred in addition to this carrying cost for this chunk in the middle that's not developed. So I don't, it sounds like this cost is for what's there. I mean, Brewster's was there before the apartments were. And just had a last phrase. I don't think that the sale price of those parcels can come out of this because this is the carrying cost for the seven acres that-
But we're not dealing with seven acres, we're dealing with five acres.
But we're dealing with five acres, but the other piece, we need to know what the other piece value is, but the other piece isn't sold yet, that one acre piece. But the other pieces were not part of this number. They were part of the bigger subdivision.
We don't know that. I mean, that's one of the questions.
But the question is, though, is this so convoluted at this point that it becomes almost impossible to actually arrive at a number to the point where we're thinking so much about these numbers right now that we're not looking at all of the standards in unison? Because they don't have to meet all of those numbers. We've got an awful lot of testimony that hasn't worked out. And that now that this is a landlocked parcel and things have transpired the way they have, that it's probably a more desirable use because it's less intense, it's less traffic, it's all of these other things. And given the efforts that have been made, they would be deprived of economic development simply because what use do you have for a flag lot there?
In an MC district.
So I just, I'm not sure. I think we're getting to a point where we can't see the forest or the trees.
It kind of, it's not similar, but it's along the same lines of thought as we had previously with the car wash further up Ridge Road. They attempted to market it for the uses that were allowed and had absolutely no luck selling it. I think this is a similar situation where the applicant has been trying to sell this property for as long as I've been on this board and has not been successful at this piece. Now, there's other pieces and the apartment complex developed from the back. The back development happened and then the market kind of shifted, so the front development didn't work out to how that was originally planned back when the apartments were conceived of and there were a couple senior living buildings and- I don't think they can give us the number that we're asking for, but they've certainly attempted to market this piece and the piece up at the road frontage for a number of years without any success by anyone, whether it's an allowable use or not allowable use. So I don't know. I don't, because it's been chopped off, I don't know that we can get the numbers that we're exactly seeking because I don't, you can't compare what the parcel was in 2013 to the parcel in 2020 because it's not the same parcel anymore. This is the flag lot that's left that nobody wanted.
Back where we began, I don't think anybody's opposed to the product. We're just doing our due diligence and asking the questions that we have to ask to give you what you want. Eric, you need any more information?
No, I'm good.
Don, you want to go through the standards and then put that recommendation on it? As a-
I don't have your standard sheets that you-
Here, I got it. Thank you. You understand the recommendation better than I think anybody else on the council and the board does.
I don't think so. Standards for used variance, applicant cannot derive all economic use or benefit of the property. Applicant has provided information in regards to the marketability of the property and has not been able to market the property for sale. Hardship related to the property is not unique and does not apply significant portion to the neighborhood. It is somewhat hidden, it is exposed to the apartments located to the back of Webster Green project. Knowing the history of trying to limit the intensity of use in that corridor, especially in Ridge Road as far as traffic and to neighboring properties, I think the intended uses would meet that qualification as far as intensity of use. This request does not alter the character of the neighborhood. MC district, I don't believe it will, as long as they comply with the screening requirements as required by town code and the master plan. This problem is not self-created. All variances are self-created. I think this, applicant's trying to use the property for its best use and being less intensive. The request is a minimum variance. That's really not applicable in this case, in my opinion.
I read.
House safety and welfare of the community will be protected. There again, it's least intensive use, they could possibly go there. Reviewing all the 80-some uses listed in the town code for what would be permitted in that area, which obviously nobody wants to utilize it for. Feel free to add anything to that.
Want to make your motion and then put the recommendation in?
I'll make a motion to grant a used variance for mini storage. I'll make a motion to grant a use variance for mini storage at 1041 Ridge Road by applicant Ridge Road Golf LC for the 5.93 acres. Parcel having SPL number 07.150-1-8.006, MC zone, meaning commercial district, under Section 225-17.
Second. Make a recommendation.
Well, the condition will-
Condition?
Yeah.
You have a second?
Aye.
Mr. Danuta?
Aye.
Mr. Snyder?
Aye. With the condition that the-
Recommendation?
Access to the main entrance to Ridge Road be be complied with to the satisfaction of the planning board.
Okay, after all that.
Does that mean, I'm sorry, does somebody still need to do a letter to the planning board? Or is this just gonna be an access to main entrance to Ridge? Depending on, depending by group?
I, I don't think there's a need for us to write a letter.
Yeah, that recommendation, and it's always a vote before the planning board. Okay, so your variance has been granted. Uh, conditions are, you got, you gotta get your permits.
One year.
And one year of meaningful construction from today. That's it. Welcome.
Good luck. Thank you very much, I really appreciate the detail and the attention that you guys gave this project. Seriously, as a Webster resident, it really makes me happy and proud, so thank you very much.
Thank you.